Uh, yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Um, yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to seal the minutes? Motion to seal the minutes is...
Sorry, I can't hear you.
...for the second discussion. There are none, but please take the roll.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So... Second.
All in favor? Aye, now adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, before we adjourn, there was a vote taken in executive session about the adjournment. Well, we have seen in the minutes, um, in the executive session, we voted to leave the minutes sealed because of the health care concerns as far as Mr. Doc's medical records. So, on the motion of adjourn, uh, officially adjourned at this point. The President, Council of the Board, uh, this time, you turn up your cell phone, uh, quick, please take the roll.
Um, here.
President.
Casas.
President.
Casas.
President.
Casas.
President. Is there a motion to discuss the meeting that we took last meeting?
So...
I have a motion to make a second discussion. There are none, but please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. While we stand in the drawing room in front of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While the Republican Council of Representatives, other any Republican Council of Representatives, there are none, while the chair, if any members of the public will have to speak on any affidavit, uh, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and please try to live as a speaking performance.
Janice Jerry, 45, 100.
Yes.
Janice Jerry, 45, 100. Um, I just wanted to address some comments that were made by members of the city council regarding the secretaries contract that, um, I have read in the press and Herald. Um, as we know, the relationship between the city council and school committee and administration has been strained, um, for a number of years. We're really looking forward to kind of getting rid of all that and working together with the council and the administration to move the district forward, um, which benefits everyone. Um, so it was concerning to me to read some of the comments, uh, that were made by some members of the council when members of the school committee were not able to attend the meeting to address them because we were having our own meeting that night based on several cancellations for snow and so, so they just kind of wanted to address some of the issues to clarify and correct some of the misconceptions that were out there. Um, when we had negotiations with our unions, they're not quick, they're not easy, um, as Councilman Stikos knows, um, they take a lot of months and months and months, and, um, this contract is no different. Um, the contract prior to this one actually went through negotiations, mediation, and arbitration. The arbitration award was handed down, okay? It was not determined by the school committee, it was handed down, it was agreed upon by the parties. Um, when we met for this contract and we hoped for a better outcome, um, we wound up again, um, going through court process, um, and into mediation. Um, so the mediation agreement came down and then there were things that were negotiated within the contract that benefited all of us. And when we do look for things, we had to address the steps that were frozen by arbitration by our contract. Those frozen steps were only there for the length of that frozen contract. So bringing them back had nothing to do with anything else but the fact that they were frozen because of arbitration and then brought back. We gave a very small salary, a very significant line with what we were offering with the unions. Longevity also was eliminated for new employees and rolled into those employees who already had it, as was done in other contracts. I'm not sure what Councilman Freina meant when he said we put everything back into the contract that was taken out of, but that is not true. Um, and Councilman Arquette saying that he was angry for what the secretaries endured, but what he may forget is that every union has to come to the table and every union negotiates contracts and this particular group, um, we seem to have to go to longer negotiations and mediations with, um, so it's not what they're doing, it's what all of our unions go through and the cost of negotiating contracts. Um, as for Councilman Pedio, I understand that, um, he had wanted to give the, the secretaries more, wished that he could give them more, and, you know, we wish that we could give everyone more, but we're not in charge of the purse strings. And by all means, if he wanted to give us more so that we can give him more, we'll take it, but it's just not how it works. And I understand that your, um, your wife is one of our employees and so you may get some version of things that, you know, has frustrated, as frustrating to you to hear, but I just want you to understand that we, we go through these negotiation processes and we would love to and we have in the past asked for members of the council to sit in the panel of negotiations so that you can understand the process and understand what we're going through with our unions. Um, and, you know, Councilman Lenny made a point that the city council is not looking at our contracts to micromanage us and he's correct. Um, I believe what, what you've seen from the contracts that we've negotiated in the last couple of years is that we're being fiscally responsible and we are trying to make changes that are for the benefit of everyone based on what we have, and that's what we're trying to do. In the future, I would really, really love, if members of the council, if you have questions regarding the contract, please contact one of us, contact someone in the administration. We'd be glad to have a discussion. It just would be to have misinformation get out of you, especially, you know, to get into the paper without us being able to have an eye on with you guys, and that's all that we're really asking for, and we appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
For personal privilege, Councilman, yes, Councilman Pedio.
Thank you. Uh, to the Chair, to the Chairman of the School Committee, um, your finance representative was in this room telling us about the contract. I specifically asked him, does this contract put back in all or most of the things that were taken out of the previous contract? His answer was yes. So there was no misinformation given to us, and the fact of not rid of this, a year ago, we voted on a contract that froze steps, took out pay raises, that took out a lot of benefits, that a year later came back before us and put them, put some of those back in, it eliminated those cuts. I had several questions as to what changed in the last 12 months to facilitate basically a reversal of the school committee's wish. That was my question. Unfortunately, no one was here to answer that question, and I understand, you know, we've got a lot of snow, a lot of meetings, a lot of issues, but we want to move forward to it. And I remember the vision of that woman standing before us, telling us that if she did not accept that contract, more benefits would have been taken away from her.
But she can't say that for sure, it was an arbitration award.
So she felt the arbitrator would take more away from her if she did not accept that contract. And one year later, one year, we're reversing course. I didn't want to vote the first contract, but the school committee came to us and said, this is all we can afford. And we all begrudgingly said, that's what you can afford, that's what you can afford, and went through it.
Uh, Councilman Pedio, I think you made your point, I can't debate the politics. And if you also, the public would like to speak on any affidavit. There are none, public papers section is not closed. All right, are there any resolutions? None? All right, Court Committees, Public Works Committee, Chairman Asido.
Um, Council President, I did inform that there was some material information that wasn't, uh, pronounced in front of committee, requests by a councilman who wanted to find out about zoning violations that were issued to the applicant. Since that information, uh, did not show up in front of the committee, even though the committee voted to, uh, send us the council on what a request that we began in fact in the public works, so all the information that Councilman Stikos wanted is, uh, up in the open and then perhaps, uh, sent it to the full council after that.
Second. Well, a motion is a second, any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stikos.
Yeah, thank you, just to repeat the, the, uh, the two things I was interested in on this abandonment. One was, um, the, the property owners, uh, what I understood was a zoning violation for one of the two properties he owns, each one is on one side of the abandonment, so I wanted to know the status of that, uh, zoning violation. Is there somewhere you can get that for me? The administration?
President, um, here is, I apologize, um, I believe it was exposed, but maybe not, that there is a pending matter in the municipal court regarding zoning violation and that the, uh, request for abandonment of the street is part of a proposed resolution to that matter. So the, uh, request for abandonment is part and parcel of a proposed, uh, plan to change the zoning for the other parcel to get that property into compliance. I'd be happy to have our ruling inspector give more detailed information if that's what the councilman would like.
Yes, that's what I would, I would like. Um, and the second thing that I had asked, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Quinlan and Mr. Kershaw was, uh, other possible options short of transferring ownership of the property such as leasing, uh, the, something else that I can't think of.
Uh, Councilman Stikos, uh, I did look into that, the city could lease it, could sell it, um, as long as they follow the current provisions on valuation, which are actually similar to the abandonment provisions, uh, valuation. So the city could sell it or lease if they chose, and the council also may have the power to approve or disapprove of requests for abandonment.
As it would approve or disapprove a lease or...
Exactly, yes.
Okay. So I would like, I, I was not at the committee meeting because the committee meeting was postponed due to the storm and the date it was postponed to, I was on vacation, so, um, that's another reason I would like to send back to committee.
All right, so Councilman Pedio, uh, we have a motion to send back to committee test. Councilman Stikos, second. Motion to read paper. All right. Any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Councilman Pedio?
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to the party, it's going to be Chairman Stikos.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, we have the monthly, uh, real estate tax payments as recommended by the taxes.
Motion approved. Second. Any discussion on this motion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Councilman Pedio?
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
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 Next is the monthly resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax payments as recommended by the taxes.
Motion approved. Second. Any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Councilman Pedio?
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
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 Uh, next are the waivers of interest on, uh, late property tax payments as recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Councilman Pedio?
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
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 Uh, and finally, the denials of the recommendation from the city treasurer that we deny requests for tax interest waivers.
Open to approve and deny. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Councilman Pedio?
Yes.
Stikos.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
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 Next, I have a resolution authorizing the city to enter an agreement with, uh, the regional department of environmental management on rebuilding a boat ramp, eco ramp at Slidhouse Cove. Uh, this is necessary for us to do a, uh, cost share with the state.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, to approve. Any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Scott.
Uh, Councilman Stikos, the only question I have is that I know it's a 75, 45% share. Do you have any projected, uh, cost of what this is going to be at this point?
Uh, we do, but I don't remember what it is. It was Ken Mason gave it to us at the committee, it was maybe, uh, a hundred dollars.
Hundred dollars?
Hundred fifty, half. Hundred, hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, yeah, I just, I wasn't here at the last meeting myself, but, uh, you know, uh, the director of administration was calling it a hundred dollars, so, uh, with that ratio, that should not be an issue. I was concerned, I was going to be considerable amount of law.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Councilman Pedio?
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
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 Uh, next is the ordinance ratified in the school contract with the secretary's union.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion on this motion? There are none, uh, do you have any other council...
President, mainly, um, it's not exactly about this, but, uh, I wanted to mention something that happened with the school committee to show how we are working together, so I was wondering if I could...
That's going to be interesting. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted, um, to let my fellow council people know that Councilman Asido ran into the school committee, uh, they had their workshop and they had, uh, a meeting and, uh, we had a chance to, kind of, last we have met, we're going to be getting affordable table for one of the schools, which will save, uh, mucho dollars in energy costs, uh, and, uh, we're going to be putting it in one of those schools, um, and, uh, we went there and explained what it was going to do and they approved it, so, um, we're working, we're moving forward and we're working together. So, uh, it was, I think it was unanimous vote, chairman, wasn't it? So, we are working together. Um, yeah, there were some issues with these, uh, secretarial, uh, party unit last time and I agree with, uh, Councilman Pedio that there was some hard feelings, uh, and, uh, when he did ask those questions, he was not confrontational last week. So, I'm going to leave it at that. Just wanted to know that it's steering me forward, uh, this is a good thing for the city, not school department, not for, uh, not for us, but for the city.
And as a side note, France will be the first city in our island to get this particular grant with solar panels on the roof of a school. First municipality, not the first school, first municipality to get that grant. All right, moving on, any other discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Councilman Pedio?
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
Casas.
Yes.
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 Okay, the next ordinance sets a, uh, system in place for the city to share costs with homeowners on replacing sidewalks.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion on this motion? Councilman Asido. Yes, I'd like, yeah, as a co-sponsor, I think I said that, I thought community, but I would have a... My rule is that Councilman Asido is a co-sponsor, Councilman Pedio? Co-sponsor. He also would be a co-sponsor. Any other co-sponsors? Councilman Sanrio, is he a co-sponsor?
Yes.
That is two. Anybody else? So I want you... All right, moving on, Councilman Stikos.
Yeah, I just want to, uh, reemphasize that this is not a 50-50 program. This is a, uh, si, this is a system where the homeowner goes with the Department of Public Works, gets approval to hire a contractor to replace their sidewalk, and then the city reimburses at a rate per square foot. And the city's costs would be determined, obviously, by the per square foot, city law, they would be determined by the appropriation made by the mayor and the council. Essentially, sidewalks would be replaced on that system until the money ran out. The rate at which, uh, the rate of reimbursement, the ordinance, uh, proposal says will be determined by the city council. So if this passes, the next thing that we would have come before us is a recommendation from the director on per square foot reimbursement, um, for sidewalks, and we would, uh, pass that or amend it or reject it, but, uh, it's, it's not a 50-50 program. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Pedio. Thank you, or, uh, through the chair, through the sponsor, is there a cap on how much we spend? We haven't determined how much we would spend on this program, am I right?
Right, it'll be subject to the annual appropriation, so it could go up and down depending on what the council says.
It's basically zero right now, so we make some...
If we, that's right, if we don't put any money in the budget, we'll have this nice little, be like the dog park, we've got a nice little set of rules, but no dog park. And, and is that, it doesn't apply to curb, or, or, it's just sidewalks?
Uh, yes. Uh, Councilman Pedio?
Thank you, Council President. As I said, when, uh, former Councilman Lee was playing the dog park, I think the planning stages are the best part. I commend my colleagues who put this through, and give us a good foundation to build off, to create a sidewalk program, we can iron up the details in the next committee meeting. I thank them for being so proactive and providing for it. Councilmen Stikos, next to you.
Uh, Councilman Akad.
Yeah, Council President, I'm looking forward to this, I think it's a very good idea, I just have a couple of questions. Um, my concern is, um, if you have, it's up to the homeowner to decide whether he wants to upgrade his sidewalk and he calls the contract, am I correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It's up to the homeowner to decide if he'd like to upgrade his sidewalk and he hires a contract, correct?
Correct.
So, every homeowner in the city decides to upgrade their sidewalk, how do we address that?
Uh, you mean how, if there are more requests and there's money to go around?
Right, I mean, uh, my opinion, I think we should have some type of, um, oversight either by administration or public works department to say, we agree that your sidewalk needs to be upgraded and you're on a list and you have, you know, when, when that, you look forward to that list, because I don't see any, the sidewalk could be brand new, but the person who decides on, you know, on a different place, the sidewalk, finding a contractor.
Uh, there are a couple of questions here. Uh, one, it, one thing is that the, the, uh, in the first section of the ordinance, it says priorities shall be given to routes to schools and sidewalks heavily used by pedestrians. So that's, that would, uh, you know, if there's not enough money, that's where the priority would be. Uh, I don't believe there's any, um, thing in the, uh, end, uh, news, in section D, line 37, you know, new sidewalks should be eligible for approval, uh, only sidewalks running parallel to the roadway, uh, not the ones going to the front door are eligible. And, uh, as far as oversight, I think we, you know, we could establish a system, or we obviously have, um, we have the right oversight without putting it in right, despite being a city council. Uh, another point is that the sidewalk, the homeowner gets their sidewalk replaced, the, it has to be by a licensed contractor, there's workers' compensation insurance, and the city will then go out and inspect the sidewalk to make sure that the, uh, what work was done in compliance with how we should do a sidewalk. Uh, I think as far as the oversight issue, that, that, probably we should discuss that when we talk about the rate of reimbursement.
So, your answer is, we're not having a list, the only way we address it are those homes that have sidewalks near schools or that are highly traveled, they get preferential treatment, am I correct?
Yes.
So it's not the date I have my sidewalk, the cop, the date I engaged with the contractor who does my sidewalk, if I'm with some script leasing the city, I won't get reimbursed to all those priority places that are reimbursed, okay? So, kind of, I don't know if that's fair. My other issue is if we set aside $200,000, $250,000 and numerous individuals decide to take this, um, idea and to get a sidewalk, and we have money to reimburse, say, 150 homes, and I'm the 152nd one, and I do my sidewalk expecting reimbursement, I wouldn't know when the budget is exhausted, only the council and administration would know, so when would I receive my reimbursement? It would be the following year, but I'd still have to wait because I don't live in a high priority zone. Uh, I see some problems here because we're not going by a list, we're not going by definite order, um, but that's what I'm concerned, I don't even figure this, but I think it's really loose.
Councilman Box.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I think I asked a similar question, uh, committee, and Mr. Mason was here, and I think they have to be pre-approved, uh, so before they do any kind of work, they have to go see the...
Deputy W., is he on the question?
Director, and he has to approve them going forward with any kind of work. So I don't think there'd be, um, in your example, I don't think there'd be a 152nd person because, uh, he knows they only need 150, whatever that normally be, so they, they do have to be pre-approved. Um, I have reservations about this program right now, I know I was foreign committee, but after giving it consideration, there's some things that I think need more funding, such as solar pool, um, I'm wary of creating a program that would take money away from something like that in order to repair sidewalks. I, in my opinion, I don't know if the timing of this is right, um, and I know it, it, there's no money being set aside at this point, uh, but I, I think there's other areas I mean, that's where it's probably... but I, I think there's other areas, I mean, there's brush, uh, for, 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 so I may be.
Uh, Mr. Peterson.
I recall, just this is to, uh, through the chair, Councilman Aketa. What Ken Mason described was, he was going to have a list of the people who applied and only allocate funds based on estimates as the homeowner. So he would not get ahead of himself in this person's money. So there wouldn't be a situation where you.
I was looking for it, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Councilman Freeman.
Thank you, Council President. It's my colleagues who, I think, have reservations on this program. This is a framework for us to build a program, not necessarily a program. I have similar reservations, as some of my colleagues do, about paying for it, figuring out where in the budget we're going to secure funds to pay for it. In reality, we might not be able to enable this next year. This may be something that we have to take a hundred thousand in bond two years out to allocate to this project. Uh, we may have to put seed money in, and we may have to go up to grants using our grant writer. Like the dog park, we don't have a dog park, we have a rule of law on books to have a dog park. Then it's up to the body to decide, okay, is it the right time to have dog? I think this sidewalk legislation is very similar, where if we can afford it, and we can implement it, we would. If we can't, then I think that's up to us as a body in respect to protect taxpayer dollars and we sure will spend on a correct balance. I hope that's the end, to the chair, to the sponsor, I think that's the intent of the ordinance.
Uh, Councilman Freeman.
Thank you, Council President, uh, through the chair, too. Councilman Freeman, I agree with you, um, and that, one of my, my issues is not necessarily that that's the process we have to take, but, uh, I don't have any sidewalks in mind, Mr. Peterson. I mean, our biggest problem with curbing, and that's my, my only reservation, that it doesn't eventually, it is something we can improve curbing because we just don't have any sidewalks. Uh, I'm sure Councilman Masito may be in the same situation, most of his work. So, uh, those people, I think, would be upset that there's some program that would provide, you know, something uh, in one district, because you can't, there's nobody to replace curves, even if it's ten percent over here, it doesn't matter. So I, that's my one concern, I don't know if, you know, for the government and the ordinance.
Councilman Masino.
I'm with the St. Warren Street family, and I think Councilman Corina, and Councilman San Maria were with me that day afternoon, killed ourselves fifteen times. And there were a lot of elderly residents who lived there, and one guy saw it, was laughing, it's our people. They killed all three, and one left a side door, but I can't afford it. I mean, I think the program has to start somewhere, and we have to develop a framework, stuff somewhere. And I agree with, uh, Councilman Corina, in that it's a start. Maybe we haven't worked out the details, maybe we haven't found the money yet, but over the years, we've cut expenses on the city side, and we've done a great job of doing that. But in essence, by cutting expenses in the degree we've cut it, we've created another tax on the taxpayers in that they have to fix things themselves. The fact that there's no fifty-fifty program is a tax on the taxpayers because they have to do everything when they want. I think the fact that they're just signing a program, and Councilman Bigby, if, you know, they want to make an amendment at Irving, I think that's a great idea in certain neighborhoods. Um, I think that we have to start someplace, and then if we have to come up with different rules and regulations, uh, who gets it? We have to scrape and get grants and the money, and I think, I mean, this is something that has been, have been mine. I think some other council members who have been in council for a while, we have to start someplace, and then we can work out the details.
Councilman Freeman.
Thank you, Council President, uh, I mean, to take out my colleague on this one, right? We think a friendly amendment to add curbing, uh, to the program, I'm not going to fund it just right now, but certainly something that we can consider, you know, should consider the more.
Second. Uh, motion to amend curbing in a day consecutive, any discussion on that? Councilman Sledgoes and Councilman Box.
I just, I, I look at this, and I see the number of times the word sidewalk is mentioned, and I think it really needs kind of a careful drafting, that might be better as a separate ordinance. I just don't know, it isn't just one place where we'd have the word curbing. And you'd want to, I guess I would ask you to introduce that as a separate ordinance. I mean, the public works director, and you can look at how it would mesh with, with this system. For instance, I just, off the top of my head, uh, we don't really care about curbing on the way to school. Right, I have some other priority for curbing, for which ones are done first. The, I don't know how the reimbursement would, it would probably go on a linear feet rather than square feet. So I would really, this was put together largely by the public works director of this system, and I, I would like him to, to.
If the, and if the solicitor feels it would be easier, simpler to do it that way, I don't know.
Mr. Peterson.
I think that makes sense, Councilman, to do a separate, a separate, uh, curbing. You don't have to mesh the monies, I think that sidewalks have a particular purpose.
And I'll withdraw my motion from.
I'll withdraw my second.
Your amendment was drawn, and the second amendment was drawn, so we're back to the original. Orders. We have a discussion. Harry Young, please take your role.
Councilor.
Yes.
Senator Serrano.
Yes.
Senator Box.
No.
Senator Rivera.
Yes.
Senator Masito.
Yes.
Senator McAdoo.
Yes.
Senator Serrano.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, sorry. Okay, uh, we have the next series of items or information that we asked for, various council people asked for at the, uh, at the previous meeting, at the finance committee. Maybe if whoever from the administration could take these one at a time.
Councilman Masino.
Yeah, through the chair, Solicitor Kirsten Baum, I, I would, you don't have to come into the eye, this would like to let us here on this whole split.
Oh, sure, I, I would be able to get to that, I mean, I'm not hard on the administration.
Okay. You don't?
No.
And what branch do you represent?
I'm independent.
Kirsten Baum.
I'm independent.
Do you have a question?
Representative Council, you.
You wouldn't have that, would you?
Dr. Viva? No.
Okay, just checking.
Very. Uh, okay, first question is regarding the cases that were assigned to Attorney Robusta. Is that in those cases? Uh, we have a list of, confirmed by Mr. Robusta, of the eight pending cases that he was assigned from that list. Just in general, again, somewhat specific to me, so I don't want to name them. But there's one particular case that, that was canceled. That happened to be the donor award, and it's still on the list, so that's not put on. Okay. Of the remaining seven cases that were active, um, five, Mr. Robusta is going to keep. One of the matters has been assigned to Attorney Robinson, and one of the matters, the administration is still deciding who should, who will fold that case. So eight in total on his list. Seven subtracting the canceled one, and he has, he has kept five. Part of the, do I want to continue?
I don't know. I think that's really.
Is that, it's up to the council, wasn't it?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
The police contract, is the administration currently negotiating with that? And which attorney represented the city with police negotiations?
I believe that the police contract. The police contract, they decided to go arbitration work?
Okay, who represented?
Attorney Robinson.
Is it for a separate year, or is it for all years that? It's one year, one year at a time. Or I guess my follow-up question would be, is there a reason for that? Instead of sitting down and trying to negotiate all at the same time?
Well, I mean, I don't think that's, I don't want to negotiate public, character, rights. What happened behind the negotiation session off the journey?
Well, Councilman Sidos.
Yeah, I, I think the, I think for the information, I, I think one of the, we wanted a list of all the cases, and who was doing which case, not just what Mr. Robusta is doing. And I, um.
Well, that's it.
So he's doing all the cases except for the, all the labor case, he's doing all the labor cases except for the police contract.
I, I think, uh, oh, I'm, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the, the, based on the testimony last time. I misunderstood exactly what the question was. I'll get that information from finance or arbitration. There may be other, in other words, there may be other labor cases that some other than Robinson or Robusta are representatives. Okay, I understand.
Okay, so it's all the cases, and who's doing all this?
I have one.
Okay, five of them. So can we expect that as an email, or how do we get that?
I will circulate an email, and I'll try to get to you as soon as I can.
Thank you.
The next, the next question, if I have the answer to this.
The hourly rate of Steven Robinson?
Yes, that was my question.
There are no bills that haven't paid by the city yet, uh, for Robinson. This hourly rate is one hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
Thank you.
So, you know, each of them, I think, Mr. Robusta testified that he bills a one eighty-five, because.
Okay, then the next one was a, a procedure for coordination in the police contract arbitration between, as, as we understood from the last meeting, Attorney Robinson was going to be the attorney arguing the case for the city, while, uh, Mr. Robusta was going to be the attorney of the city on panel hearing the arbitration.
I understand that there was one main item that I explained this to be learned out, that's still bad.
This coordination is still, is there a date yet for the arbitration? I think I noticed that, um, there was a delay.
I'm going to check, I believe, and I'm waiting to prepare the information. I believe that's in June.
You believe?
That's in June. That's American arbitration of the fourteen dash four, four, five. Scheduled for June, I believe, based on the email, scheduled for June fifteen, sixteen.
Well, there it is, it's, uh. Right, so we were, we were paid for a co-sponsor, it looks like, on the first page of the legal expenses? Okay.
Correct. I have not seen the expenses, so I have a co-sponsor. If it wasn't for that. I was explaining about the dark administration, that there was a co-sponsor in the case during the period of time that the negotiations were taken place.
Okay, because one of the points that Mr. Robusta made at the finance committee meeting was that there needed to, there needed to be good preparation if you were going to go to arbitration, and that that was time-consuming. So you anticipate?
I anticipate us to be prepared and, uh, in a couple.
You know, when it may be that the coordination of the system is, uh.
I know, well, I'm sure that's a part of my email to you.
Anxiously waited. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Then, well, Richard, Councilman Masino.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that, Mr. Council President, through the chair. Solicitor Kirsten Baum, I just, I mean, not that I dislike arbitration, but I don't like it because it puts the, uh, puts the worry of somebody independent in the city to spend city dollars in the long term, and that could affect us adversely. Are there any claims to sit down and try to negotiate that contract, or have to have them negotiate? Not that I want to negotiate with public, but to have them, can we please make a scheduled session where we can get up to date on it? And I don't know if I can do that to the council.
I'll make that, I'll make that request.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Masino.
I thank the Council President. As you know, the last man is going to be, that express, uh, being the concern of the, uh, the lack of, of smoking rule on the rest of shelters. People still standing in the street waiting for the bus. I asked Solicitor Kirsten Baum to find out, along with you, if they can be fined. Solicitor Kirsten Baum might as well go to the weekend, uh, glad I got a chance to. I did some little homework, so.
Do I need to do that first, or?
Whatever you want.
Okay, offices work for the city of Grayson, and none of them ever, so they never leave out the rest of shelters. Never, not one. Uh, there was a TV channel, uh, reporter over the weekend, which says Lamar, who was the, uh, contractor, builds and owns old shelters, that's a quote from the TV reporter, builds and owns old shelters. And we know they advertise on, so I would consider that a business. Since we find businesses, Lamar's a business, so why not find? And my last concern, as you deserve this chair, is the liability if someone gets hit by a bus, standing on the middle of the street. Those are my concerns, and I'd like to follow up, the Solicitor, along with the finance chair.
Well, I mean, as I told you with the phone, my Vice President, I mean, you raise some valid concerns about, you know, what hasn't gone on. I attempted to look for some kind of authority to stay wide about steps slowly, about bus stops, and I didn't find any. I then went to research, reached his own website, and I did find that they do have a executive board. The executive board did negotiate a period of time ago for Lamar to clean out these very small percentage, less than ten percent of their old shelters. less than 10% of their old shelters. I did follow up with a phone call to Barbara Palacetti, who we all know is now the spokesman for, uh, Ripta. She, she gave me the impression that perhaps Lamar doesn't own the shelters, but there's some kind of contractual relationship between Lamar and Ripta. And that this has been an unprecedented move in their view, and they don't have the manpower and all the budget to remove the snow from bus stops, and they're kind of relying on the local cities and towns and the laymen to do that. There are no good answers, there was no result or any definitive, uh, okay, so resolution to, to the conversation with us for who was responsible.
So my follow-up question would be then can we send them up a fine letter for each bus shelter in the city of Creighton? I just want, I just want someone on record to find the Ripta or Lamar saying they are or they are not going to clear the shelters, period. If they're not, fine, I disagree. If they are, that's even better. But I just think that, uh, we're getting the wrong one. And I think probably other cities and towns get the same wrong one, so.
Monsieur? Uh, I would, I agree with Richard. I think we ought to, if they're not, if the shelters aren't cleared, then Lamar will be fined. And if they're not the real owner of the shelter, then I'm sure they'll let us know. As their fines not does. Monsieur?
Play devil's advocate here, let's say one is a three-foot mound in front of the curb that exists throughout the city, that's not part of the shelter. So let's say, in a perfect world, Ripta gets on the stick and clears out the shelter, but again, there's a three-foot, uh, pile of berm between the shelter and the street. Now, so Ripta can go back and say, well, we'll play the shelter when the city clears there, so people can access the bus from the shelter to the street. It's all good to play at the shelter, but if the street isn't clear, no one can board that bus anywhere.
But can you just follow that real quickly? The bus shelters are open facing the street. Uh, the sidewalks and the lot caves are in the back, so our work starts on.
Well, I'm speaking, there's a shelter in Pontiac Avenue, first hour, and the other day I drove by, and I looked, I fully agree with you too, because I saw some person standing on top of the berm waiting for the bus, but the problem is, is even if you play the shelter, it's still going to be a three-foot drift from the curb to, you know, about this wide from the curb to where the bus is going to be. So now, how does that person get over that? So whose responsibility is it from the curb? I'm telling you, it's the city's, so I mean.
Just, you know, to the chair, to the counsel, but I guess whoever owns that road, Pontiac Avenue of the state, I think the state should be, I mean.
That's, that's a safe part of the road.
So if it's a city road, we, we could clear that section and, and open that up. So I would hope that we could take care of our own streets at, at the bus stop, and then we would have to maybe find Lamar Angel Ripta. We could send a, you know, notice to bring them both into their rightful court. They have any protection by law with the patient raising there. But I would think we can only control our own streets and sidewalks.
Let me throw another. The high end for fire, who owns the land? City of Creighton, that shelter is built on city land. We don't, do we charge them, the shelters are our property? The answer's no.
Sure.
So, do we not charge them? It's on city land. Who's responsibility is to clean city land? They're not paying no taxes, they're not paying, they're not paying no rent. It's our responsibility, that's who it is.
Clearly, there's an agreement, there's some kind of contract between Lamar and Ripta. You know, whatever, what that says about the responsibility of the maintenance of the shelter, I don't know. All I know is in one of the minutes of executive meeting, uh, we started an agreement with Lamar to remove, you know, less than, I think it's 200 out of 400. So for that clear, I think that Ripta could have demanded it of him. I'm just guessing, could have demanded with some of that.
Counsel. Does the city have an agreement with the Ripta or Lamar?
Running out of words.
All right, so Lamar and Ripta are?
Business partners.
They're business partners and they're putting up old shelters on city property.
Yes.
Now, we're not taxing them or charging rent for anything else that you're doing. Taxation is used to the public. But since it's city property, somebody gets injured for whatever reason, would you like?
So basically, so basically, we're taking all the responsibility and getting nothing out of it.
Exactly.
They're getting the revenue, Lamar's getting the revenue from the advertiser. Ripta comes before us for resolutions, asking us to give, uh, memorialize a gentleman to give him more money. They want ridership, they want people to use the bus, but yet we're stuck cleaning them up. Makes absolutely no sense at all.
Typical for our bureaucracy. Congressman Stikos. Well, so how do we get this, uh, how do we get this resolved? Because there's, I think there's yet another question, which is that in at least some cases of the bus shelters, we don't own the property, we own an easement on the property.
Well, I, I made a suggestion to Vice President, if you think it's valid or not. Suggestion was, you know, there seems to be a safety issue. If people put this before Safety Services, and I could ask Representative Lamar, come before the city, we could ask his question with Lamar. Perhaps bring with them the contract that they have for permission to hide these bus shelters up. At least start the ball low.
Good, that sounds good. Uh, counsel, please.
The chair was actually on a request of the chairman of the Safety Services and Licensing Committee for Ripta to see how they got their properties and basically report back to Safety Services Committee to where finance or the deli, it's all on the committee to do it if he, if he's fit.
Could we get Lamar before the, uh, my committee?
Yeah. Both of them?
Uh, spokesman for Ripta and a spokesman for Lamar.
Because it's not, it's not that they get all the benefit.
So the show plus is going to be approved to what's why we shouldn't find them basically.
Good idea.
Because in some way, we get all the benefit, when they get all the benefit, we get nothing. And we have to clean up this number.
And you know, if someone gets hurt.
It's our fault, it's our fault.
This is a no-win situation.
Yeah, lose, lose.
Judges will put your signs on there, windows. Put a sign. Anybody else? Let's move on. Great trivia. I guess we're a little snitchy, uh, because we only, we only take one claim. I do deny minutes, we only take out one claim. Oh, yeah, awesome, we received $210 for some vehicle damage, and no one wants that. Very good. Moving on, public hearings, may you go to the public and speak on any item?
Valerie, she wanted to make a cross statement, but I'm not. Um, I was listening with great interest about the sidewalk thing. As many of you have been, I've been through this a long time, and every year I publish to you about this non-sidewalk. I'd much rather save money towards a piece of equipment that can clear the sidewalks. Maybe it's because I'm a lunch lady and I hear the kids in the morning. Maybe it's because I almost had a kid, a man coming here because they had dark clouds down and they had to walk in the streets. I understand that, but I lived in Wisconsin, guess what? The sidewalks were always clear, they had a piece of equipment, they would, and make the same priorities. You don't have to do it everywhere, do it where there are schools, you know, high traffic areas. So those people are safe to come. So instead of doing the whole sidewalk program, build a piece, get a piece of equipment to clear the sidewalks so we can have some safety. And clearly, it's not working to find anybody or to expect the homeowner to do it. And I want to thank public works, whoever does the clearing and the streets, because they, I'm sure they are overworked and just beside themselves with a storm every other day. They have done a very good job. And yesterday, I was like, oh, this is going to be a mess. And in the final hour of clocking through, it was wonderful. So I would like to thank them, but I would even consider finding the necessary equipment to clear the sidewalks. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public, would you speak to any? Doctor, or Dr. Knight? There are none. Your name and address, please.
Tom Leach, fourteen Street Drive, Creighton. Been living in Creighton this long for 21 years, and I had this at the last city council meeting, but I didn't agree, but as soon as we guys are passing away all this contract except ours, figured I'd let you know that I got pretty much every contract in the city of Creighton has a contract awarded till 2017. I was in it July 30th, 2012. Now, we got to your question, it's one year the arbitration, okay? Could it be because politics involved? Probably. I mean, Channel 10, three separate articles, Counsel President Manning, you suggesting that they let the chief do the job over there? The John Little case, that has something to do with it? I don't know, but if it does go to arbitration, anybody that knows anything about previous arbitration cases, they're probably going to notice that all these contracts, they've got raises. We've had nonsense 2012. And I did a little bit of research, most cities and towns don't go without a contract, and I believe Pawtucket was the last one in their, um, distressed city. I believe they got one and a half percent retroactive. So it's just something to keep in mind, the administration, if they're marking back to the table talk, that's all I have, thank you.
Anybody else in the public, would you speak to any doctor, or Dr. Knight? There are none. Protesters pop, motion of public hearings. Election of city officials. Personal lawyer, attorney, appointment of Gennaro Granby, sponsored by Congressman Akka.
Motion, sir.
Congressman May, second, cool. Any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Congressman Corino?
Yes.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes.
Congressman Fox?
Yes.
Congressman Verretta?
Yes.
Congressman Seale?
Yes.
Congressman Marvickio?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
Yes. We want the city officials. Are, are there any, we want city officials? Executive Communications? Hiring of a special counsel, consultants, assumed in trial section, 15.05.
As president, I believe, the number of counsel received, the report as of each month, on the hiring of outside counsel for various civil matters.
Request for continued service for one year.
As president, the administration has received a number of requests this, uh, this month for continuation of service. We have to read through them.
Yes, please.
Beginning with, uh, Private Christopher Yates, Princeton Fire Department, submitted his request. Appears to be duly submitted, along with documentation evidencing his ability. And we recommend that he be continued in service for one year.
Motion approved, second. Motion, third, second, any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Congressman Corino?
Yes.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes.
Congressman Fox?
Yes.
Congressman Verretta?
Yes.
Congressman Seale?
Yes.
Congressman Marvickio?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
Next, Private Kevin McCollum, also of the Princeton Fire Department, has submitted his request to be continued for one year in service, along with documentation evidencing, uh, his fitness for service, and we recommend that he be continued as well.
Motion approved, second. Motion, third, second, any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Congressman Corino?
Yes.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes.
Congressman Fox?
Yes.
Congressman Verretta?
Yes.
Congressman Seale?
Yes.
Congressman Marvickio?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
Congressman President?
Yes.
Superintendent Peter Fornier of the Princeton Fire Department has submitted his request to be continued in service for one year, along with documentation evidencing his fitness to do so, and we recommend approval.
Motion approved, second. Motion, third, second, any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Congressman Corino?
Yes.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes.
Congressman Fox?
Yes.
Congressman Verretta?
Yes.
Congressman Seale?
Yes.
Congressman Marvickio?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
And finally, Private Timothy Calontonio of the Princeton Fire Department has submitted his request to be continued in service for one year, along with documentation evidencing his fitness to be continued, and we recommend approval.
Motion approved, second. Motion, third, second, any discussion? There are none, but please take the roll.
Congressman Corino?
Yes.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes.
Congressman Fox?
Yes.
Congressman Verretta?
Yes.
Congressman Seale?
Yes.
Congressman Marvickio?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
Congressman Veyron?
Yes.
There were two claims filed by the services office, one for trees and wood of vehicle damage, and Susan Diaz for $2,000 per person.
Excellent. Uh, counsel, present, congratulations. Uh, first, I want everybody to, I want to announce a trash amnesty subcommittee meeting will be Wednesday, February 25th, at 6:30 PM. Okay, so we must attend. Secondly, this week, I read the paper, what a meth lab being clustered in Devon Manor. A senior handicapped, low-income housing project, approximately 125 people living. And they described the method of making meth as a one-pot type thing that was extremely dangerous. What bothers me is, two individuals were between 30 and 40 years old, who were apprehended. What bothers me is, how do they get into that manner and able to rent if they weren't handicapped or senior citizens? I'd like to know the procedure the city of Creighton is using. Some of the extreme people who are each type of means. I know right now in the city of Creighton, there's a huge weightless for senior citizens to try to enter someone's means. And I know that's be shared with handicapped individuals, but I think the administration should be looking into, what's exactly what the procedures are that qualifies people, especially people who are in thirties and forties, who commit meth, so they can't be that handicapped. And I'd like to know from the state. Mr. Estrada's right here, ready to tell me why that, uh, why this happened in the first place, the work they're doing in the future for a while. It bothers the hell out of me, to be honest with you. Especially when you get seniors living next door, people making meth.
Counsel President, if I can adjust a couple of those points. Devon Manor actually does not fall under Princeton Housing Authority. It's actually a privately-run, um, facility. It's actually a privately run facility. However, I can answer some of your questions. Back in the mid-nineties, under the Clinton administration, the housing that we traditionally think of as elderly housing, like Niceville Manor, for example, all of that was deregulated to allow for diversification for elderly and handicapped people. And unfortunately, what has happened is, handicapped people has been stretched out to include recovering drugs, people who were recovered from drug use, alcoholism, mental issues. It's been drawn to the point where almost anyone who can say that they are a victim of alcoholism or drug use, or any of those type of issues, they qualify as disabled, utilize those apartments. It's a problem that's been ongoing for decades now, and you're seeing more and more of those type of people who would make meth or, to the average person who doesn't know any better, they look healthy, they look like they shouldn't be there. But unfortunately, because of federal deregulation of those living facilities, they unfortunately do qualify. So clearly, it's something that we wouldn't want to happen, but unfortunately, the way things are right now, these people do qualify for that housing. I know that I do work with Lingual Oujon, who does oversee Cranston Housing, and does see Niceville Manor, Arlington Manor, there's two other facilities that we have. And I know she's really good about screening and the process, but some of these, like Devon Manor, for example, are privately run, and they unfortunately don't fall under Cranston Housing Authority. But we could maybe pursue some questions or some follow-up with Howard, who would oversee those private facilities.
I think that maybe that's a good idea. Have Mrs. Oujon get over there, and find out what guidelines, and see if they're being followed in all senior housing in Creighton, whether it be by the city or by individuals. I know, for example, Bonn Manor is all seniors. Niceville Manor is mixed. Arlington Manor is mixed. I wasn't aware that drug addicts, recovering drug addicts, recovering alcoholics are considered handicapped.
Say it carefully.
Yeah, well, maybe it's because my age, I'm a little bit older than everybody else, but bothers that, this bothers me, bothers me off a lot because I know I get calls almost every week of seniors looking to get senior housing. And when I go to the city, they end up in ninety-nine, one hundred and five, one hundred and ten on the list, and you go by that list very carefully, and I see these characters living in those places that should be going to seniors who really need them. Not somebody who's recovering until he gets his meth money, buy more drugs.
Counselor, I don't, and certainly I'll be happy to follow up on this, Oujon.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor President.
Counselor Naketo.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for bringing this up, because Devon Manor isn't awarded. To the chair of administration, Mr. Lopez, if Devon Manor is a private entity, which I think it is, can the city seek any legal recourse in the form of green works for the time the Creighton police have to spend in its surveillance and operation in order to arrest the individuals who are responsible for the creation of the drug? Do we seek reimbursement for the cooperation at home's Devon Manor for not policing their entity or institution?
I think that's something I'll leave for solicitor, push it along, just wanted to.
I think in order to have a type of liability on behalf of the manor, you would have to show some type of gross negligence, that they didn't do something that was, kind of was right in your face, that they should have known about Paul Wong. As Director Lopez has said, just by being a former addict, it doesn't disqualify him, so it's a tough one. It's a tough slope to say, you, there was an addict there, that's the definition of prejudice, so it's a tough one. It's a tough burden, so I understand your question, I'm open to refer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Counselor Spiccos.
I have two senior housing places in my board, and the same, it's also a problem. They're just have younger people who tend to allow it, if nothing else. But I wonder if it might make sense to invite somebody from Hot or Lingual Oujon or whoever to their ordinance committee meeting, or finance committee meeting, or safety services or something, and get some answers to these questions, because it's persistent.
Well, she persists.
No, no, she might know the rules, the entrance rules, better than we do.
Counselor Corino.
Thank you, Counselor President. Not the directors, I don't know if you remember when we were doing our tours of all the senior centers, when we were in Bonn Manor, there were three young people who came up to us and were talking to us about running some entity, and how they were from Providence, and they were living in the manor. And the question we asked to ourselves was, how could they be in the manor? We assumed that their grandmother lived there, and they were visiting their grandmother, but now it seems more likely that, and they were young, and they fit that mold of potentially being a former drug addict. And it makes more sense now that they were living there, and maybe because Oujon didn't know, they let us into what's happening in our manors that we currently have. Because we went to several, where people came down to get their free meal, and there were a lot of younger people.
I think Mrs. Oujon will be, take a look, pay us, speak to us. Any other questions? All right, there are none, going out to counsel. Any communications?
Three items. First item is the use of the tax letter to promote recycling of other city programs. There is an ordinance that requires the mayor to use the tax letter to promote recycling. And I know that the administration is in favor of this, but somehow it gets forgotten. So we'd like to have it on the agenda until the tax letter goes out, and hopefully it won't be forgotten this year, or we can do something with the back to promote recycling or promote recycling plus other messages we wish to send to the public.
Mr. Strong.
Yeah, Counselor, I think we discussed that last year, I believe, and I think one of the issues was how it was going to be printed, if it was going to be on the front or the back of the tax letter, and if it required another piece of literature, the cost that would incur for having all in one piece going out to the taxpayer, that was a factor. So I think we need to, still the guidelines or game plan of how we want to set it up that's not going to be an additional cost, and yet will be effective for what you want to achieve.
Well, I agree. I think we went through that, and we, you know, we're talking about the blank side. Mayor usually takes up one side of his letter, so that it wouldn't, you know, would involve a small amount more of printing, but I think would be well worth it. We all, I think all, every resident received a recycling letter within the last couple of months, when there was a problem with the trash, that loads were getting ejected of recycling. So it's just something that we've got to constantly remind people about, and know that in the past years, Mr. Lopez has said, you know, that he was, he was apologetic that it had been forgotten, so I'm just putting it on here, reminding everyone.
Okay. Because I know when I spoke to our tax collector, who generates the document, yeah, concerned about how, you know, the cost of having it printed on the back is an additional cost from just having a letter from the mayor. I think also, I hope we are, I'll probably check into it tomorrow, I hope we're utilizing our webpage more efficiently, too, and have information on there as well. So I think what you're saying, I don't have an issue with, I just want to know how much an additional cost it may be, but in addition to that, I want to make sure we're using our webpage efficiently as well.
The next thing I have was, I want to get a report from the administration on the citations and fines for failing to clear sidewalks.
I have a report from Colonel Jankus, which reflects the period from January 26th, 2015, to February 23rd, at oh, six forty-five hours, which is six forty-five in the morning. We had three hundred and eighty accidents during the snow ban, and, I'm sorry, we had three, excuse me, let me skip that here. We had snow ban citations, two hundred and two, for a total of approximately seventeen thousand dollars. The citations are about eighty-five dollars a pop. We had snow ban vehicles moved at the request of the police, three hundred and four. We had sixty-four snow ban tolls. The police issued a hundred and many sidewalk notification warning letters, sidewalk violations to residences were written out, charged, sidewalk violations of businesses, thirty-two businesses, eighteen of which were given twenty-dollar fines, and fourteen were given two hundred and fifty-dollar fines. They had total sidewalk violations of sixty-two, which were equal to about forty-four hundred dollars. And that's the information we have right now. I can give the city clerk a copy of this, and she can distribute it to you if you wish.
Confusing. I thought, two hundred and two people were fined? Now, those are two hundred and two residents?
Snow ban citations. It's not clear as to which.
Oh, it's not a sidewalk, it's parking in the street when there was a snow ban?
Right.
Oh, okay. And so how, what were the sidewalk numbers? Hundred and ninety warning letters, thirty-two businesses were fined?
Thirty, thirty residences for a total of sixty-two violations.
Now, do you, do you track whether the fines are actually, because those people could appeal to municipal court, do you track how many people actually paid the fine, and how many get fined?
We don't track that at all, either the mayor's office, I'm sure if we asked the court, see what that would be, what that would look like, they could probably find that out for us.
Okay. Yeah, would you mind doing that?
No, no, no.
All right, I'm just curious about citizens. Okay, thank you.
All right, now let's do a post hoc, speaking to the counsel.
And then, my last, my last point is, I got a couple of calls from people that, when they call, it seems to be, it seems that it's somewhat confusing when you think your street is being plowed, what to do about it. Some people like call me, or their counsel, some people call the mayor's office, some people apparently call Public Works, and are told that sometimes they can't leave a message. So, and they get angrier and angrier each phone call. So, usually the counsel phone call is the last phone call that we get. Is there, at one point we had a hot line, is there an obvious, within a system that it's obvious who to call when you have a storm problem, you can leave a message, or get a call back, or something?
Okay, so, what I can tell you is that during storms, dependence, there is storm, and how serious things are, we open, we sometimes open up the emergency management center out of the fire department. And that's when you've heard that we issue a hotline number for situations that develop during a storm. So that's really the best method for people to call in emergencies, or problems, and so on and so forth. As far as calling is concerned, the best thing that people can do is call the Public Works number. I don't know how many lines they have, but I do know that they have a few people answering phones. And sometimes, if they've got, all those people are tied up, because people, you know, it's like Chicken Little, the sky's falling, because the street didn't get plowed, they can get overwhelmed, and it might go to voicemail, and depending on how busy they are, they may get a call that day or the next day. So Public Works is still the best number for them to call. Obviously, as you know, city halls open during these things, we don't close. The mayor's staff is here as well, we're receiving phone calls, and in the case where we may have to leave because of the, you know, the end of the day, or we're exhausted, we have left a recording that picks up and directs people to call the emergency center if it's open, or Public Works if, you know, if we don't answer in the mayor's office.
Is this, is this an issue that you work on, or Jeff Ramon works on, or both of you? Because I sent a fairly constituents detailed email about how she called, I think, three times, and two out of the three times, she was unable to leave a message. And that just seems like, I mean, what you said sounded fine, it gets referred to voicemail. And I can understand they don't get a call back right away, but in these cases, there wasn't even a voicemail, and there wasn't a person who would take a message.
I can't speak to that particular situation. Sometimes people think that because they got 461-1000, they're getting Public Works, or they're getting the mayor's office. But 461-1000 is the main number downstairs, and if they haven't had an opportunity to set up in the night before, or as, in many of the cases during these storms, if they're weekend storms, they, that may have been what happened there. If they call Public Works directly, which, I don't know the main number on top of my head. There you go, Counselor Naketo, obviously it's called there.
If they read it off, they read mine magnet, right?
Right, if they call that number, they're going straight to Public Works. If they call 780-310, which is the mayor's office, the main number, obviously they'll go straight to the mayor's office. And then, if they're there, they'll get that, they'll get that. So I suspect, Counselor Naketo, that it must have been that 461-1000, the main city hall number, and that's probably what happened. I can't say with certainty, but based on my years of experience there, I'd be comfortable saying that that's probably what happened.
Could I ask the other members of the council if they have any trouble like this?
Well, I was with Counselor President. A little bit confused, I thought that we were supposed to go through the emergency manager coordinator, which is Counselor Naketo, and Counselor Naketo would be the central point where he moves everything over to the administration. Now I'm hearing there's an emergency management center, and then there's a command center at the garage, so I don't know what we're supposed to do anymore. I direct all my calls to the emergency manager coordinator, and he seems to, you know, call whatever he calls, which I wish Director Ramon thinks he can get done.
I've been responding, right? I've been responding, right?
Right. So I don't know, I go back to the procedural wise, but if there's something else, I'm running something through to them.
Councilman Cino.
I go off the grid a little bit, yes, I call Director Ramon. I call Director Ramon with all my members, all my friends, because that's my specialty was to go through the constituent areas, so I guess there was a confusion around here.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, President. As Councilman Seado said, there's a procedure in play, they have a storm, on the council liaison, they get in touch with Jeff, and that's been working pretty well. The issue that Councilman Stipe just brings up is, it's not a problem during the day when the city halls open. I think, what, if a storm hits on a Saturday, Sunday, or in the evening, and constituents panic, you know, the city hall's going to be closed, and at that point, you know, who do they call? And of course, a constituent, a fears individual, Jeff Ramon's not going to be at work. So, you said, well, I think you should set up some type of hotline, especially on a week during the evening, that when there's a storm, citizens realize they can call that number and get quick results.
I don't know if that's something that we would look into, I mean, setting up a whole separate line, and who are they going to call, and who's going to man it, and the whole nine yards, I mean, these people already have a few options. And really, the best, especially for plowing, the best thing to do is really call Public Works, because their ones that are working, they'll work through the night, there'll be someone there if we have people out at 3:00 in the morning, and that question calls. Whereas if we set up a hotline, we're not going to have someone at 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning.
Hotline could be the Public Works number, that could be a hotline number. If you want to call Public Works, you say, when the city hall's closed, this is the number you call, hotline number, which you would know for Public Works, the citizens have that number?
Again, they already have the Public Works number, but I don't think it's publicized as much as you, they have, every 1004611000, that's what they dial.
And when the city hall's closed, I think, you know, it's open, it's open anyway, and I think we need to address that, especially on weekends, every storm's done on a Sunday evening, and the city hall's closed. City hall's, and that's a problem.
Councilman Seado. I think Public Works guys do a great job there, being a senator and whatnot, but I guess I wanted to come up with one solution, so it's not complicated. Serving our previous council, who was a local coordinator, the city hall. I mean, if that doesn't work, or something happens, then fine. If not, I don't think Public Works is going to appreciate any hundreds of phone calls for some reason or another. They know it's snowing, they're out there working, the private contractors are out there working. I think we need to, you know, put our heads together here and come up with a solution. How are you going to use that system before we're going to lose something else? And what is the administration's approach?
If I could just tell you, Jeff is the minister. I actually have listened to and witnessed our constituent director, Jeff Ramon, handle hundreds of phone calls. And in all of those, I do think there may have been one street that did not get plowed at the time of the mayor. So, these calls do come in, they do go to the Public Works, the highways garage, I've been there, I've seen the calls coming in, there's one person there to answer the phones, everybody else is out mowing streets. She does the best she can. We have dispatchers out on the road, checking on the progress of the trucks, our city trucks, our vendors, they're out there doing the best they can. People get impatient, we understand. Jeff Ramon does yeoman's work in calming everyone down, and explaining to them that their street will get plowed as soon as possible. Having a different phone number, I'm not sure it would change anything. We would still plow the streets as quickly and as well as we can. I understand that people want answers, and if it's Saturday morning at 7:00, and they want to know why the street's not plowed yet, they may not get an answer for Monday morning, but Jeff does the best he can to get back to everyone quickly. We've had other people jump in on the first big snowstorm that started this month of fun that we've had. There were three of us in the mayor's office that day, and, you know, fortunately the phone didn't ring too much, because I think everybody just understood, well, there were literally hundreds of phone calls, and everyone got an answer as quickly as we could get to them.
Councilman Correa.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I certainly commend the work of all the DPW guys that we have, and they've done a great job. I think, you know, one thing that I, that always helped me put it respectfully when I talk to a constituent, is I happen to live with a person who expects our road to be plowed within 15 minutes of the first lake falling, my cul-de-sac. And what helped me assuage my lovely wife was the protocol that the city goes through in plowing the roads. And I think that's something that we should probably put on the website next year, because we did a great job with school protocols, when schools closed, it really clears a lot of confusion. I think we could link that link at the top, it says, you know, how to know when your road's going to be plowed. If you live on a main thoroughfare, it's going to get plowed 10 times. It's going to get plowed repeatedly, over and over. If you live on a secondary main, and at least give them a definition of what a main road, a secondary main, and people who like, you want to hide them in the plac, in a cul-de-sac, and we see them 36 hours, that'd be pleasant.
President, I think that's a great suggestion, and I will work with our DPW director to get that down on paper and on the website.
Councilman Stipe.
I think that's a really good idea, because when I explain to people about, you know, the contractors through the side streets, they don't get called until, you know, so three inches, they're paid by the size of their vehicle, that's why there are pickups on your side street when there's big trucks elsewhere, that people...
And they get called.
Yeah, so I think that's a very good suggestion. And I, the whole thing with the phone calls, I guess I'm getting that not a lot of other people have problems with citizens not getting any answers, so I think I'm all set with that. And also, like you say, I did get compliments on the topic from, particularly John Carson was complimented by the owner of Little Falls for sending a truck out to clear in front of his business, so he could have a business. And I know there were a lot of problems with the storm, or people came up here, were these problems, but as far as I know, no one got hurt, just know it was pretty much plowed under the system without spending a lot more, a lot more money, I don't know how we could do better.
Councilman Buss.
Thank you, Council President. It's kind of, I was going to make it my portion, but this is kind of the main part. And while I'm also complimentary of the, I guess what we call the first responding DPW during the storms, I think we've had issues where the secondary cleanup, I don't think has been up to par. And even yesterday, I received an email from someone requesting to take a ride down Moran Street and look at it. And I went down the street, and there's two tire tracks, with a big thing of ice in the middle and ice on the sides. And it's been a week since I believe it last snowed. And I don't think any roads of Cranston should look like that a week after a snowstorm came. And then I proceeded to take across the street, and Beckwith and Burnside were also in the same condition. I took a drive down Magnolia today, coming back from Cranston East, and that is just an ice break. And there's streets, I think, in my ward, and I expressed a certain finance committee, where there's some streets that are perfectly acceptable to drive down, and there are other streets that are just horrible. And I don't know what the quality control is being implemented. I know Mr. Coop said that they have people going, dispatchers or someone going out to check on the plows. But there has, something has to be done where a day or two days later, we're out again looking at the streets. And it's really too bad yesterday was a Sunday, because it really was an opportunity to really clean up a lot of the streets with the melting that was going on. But in my opinion, and I've received many emails and phone calls about this, is that the secondary cleanup, I don't think, and, you know, there, this budget cycle coming up, if it's not, need more money to address the secondary issues, I'm a little unsure of that. I don't know if city trucks can just be on patrol once, once the initial sweep is done, and city trucks can just go out and do a secondary, or even a third, acts on some of these streets. And again, alluding to the Ripley issue, again, if we, if we clean out the, if the city eventually, it's finally, we thought, we're going to clean out the shelters, it's still not going to be able to get the street because of the three-foot snow brick that's between the curb and the street. And, you know, and I understand that February's been extraordinary in terms of snowfall, but again, you know, there shouldn't be an excuse a week later that there's two tire tracks now, still going out of road, and people, I have a truck, and people in cars, I'm sure, I mean, really are tired of these streets, so I hope this is something we can address during the budget cycle, hopefully, going forward for next year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Separate matter, but... Councilman Cino.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to, the Walnut Grove, Atwood Avenue, traffic light, it should be blinking already, you might check with Director Ramon. The power box is on back door, so I just wanted to get up the...
Council President, I have some information from our Public Works director, Ken Mason, who informed me that the control communications box for the traffic light at Walnut Grove and Atwood Avenue, according to our DOT, the control box has arrived and will be installed this spring. They would not give him a definite date, but it's a, it's a state, it's a state project where our DOT has the box.
Okay, I think we need another letter. Is he around?
He's hiding. He's hiding, he left.
Being protected.
Richard, anybody want to hear about weed?
Yeah, we can, maybe I can call the center of the body, you know, if you can, if you can, okay? Also, I just want to ask, well, I've had before, I'm sorry. Can we get an update on where the State Police report is? That was communications. Do we know where the police report is? Like I said, where's the beef, where's the report?
Councilway President, last week, you said that same question, and I got the same answer. Two weeks.
Like the money bit.
Two weeks from, two weeks ago?
Councilman Correa.
Thank you, Council President, I have two things. First, the constituents have been asking about snow rule. Just to let you know, before February, snowfall from hell, we actually asked the administration to put together a wish list through Director Mason of all the things we think they would want. The one thing, when Director Mason comes before us, but that's not going to be questioned a lot, working up on Austin, near schools, they have these little tractors that have four-foot snow throwers in front of them, that go about four feet high, and they don't, I saw one in Frampton, and I called Councilman in Frampton, because Councilmen, as we do, we call people. And I asked them, I said, how many do you have? They said, we don't have in every school, because we can't afford it, they're expensive. But what we did was, we looked at the schools that had a high penetration of walkers, and we started with those at first, and then the next year, we started with the schools that had higher penetration of walkers. So the one thing we recommended to Director Strong, who's potentially going out to bond, to pick up some of these things that have in our more urban communities, were a lot of children's milk. So we're trying to figure out ways to work with our partisan school department to do this, so hopefully we can find some money or buy the bond and do that. Secondly, what I've noticed with calls from constituents about snow rule is, we haven't really changed the way we plow the streets. The quantity of the snow is magnifying the issues that already existed in how we plowed. I used to live in Ward 2 of Don's Ward, and they always used to just plow one line right down the street. And when it was a four-inch snowstorm, it didn't really matter, you could do shovels on the street for a while. I think the issue they're coming into now is the sheer magnitude of the snow, and they give that one pass on a lot of these side roads, and they just don't go back and do it again. We notice in parts of Cranston, where Councilman Seado is the ward councilman, sometimes they forget to plow cul-de-sacs. I know my cul-de-sac wasn't plowed after Saturday because it was going to be 40 degrees on Sunday. It saves the city money, and as a councilman, I, as a constituent, I appreciate that, but it does leave that layer of ice in the way that the, as the cul-de-sac council. So again, it goes back to not necessarily that we're not doing a good job cleaning, it's that maybe our strategy needs to change a little bit, and know that if there are cul-de-sacs that we're not going to plow, we're only going to plow once, we can go back and put salt on them. If there are streets that we're only going to go down one path, like Councilman Lott's point, do we go back and widen the roads a little bit? So I think it goes to reassessing, and working with the administration on what the plowing strategy is with our vendors, and trying to fix it to make sure it's more effective. Because dare to think, in parts of Ward 2, especially here, I can only imagine a firetruck having to go down that road, and then another car coming from the opposite direction, they both can't fit. So I think with the magnitude of the snowfall magnitude, we have to rethink the strategy.
Councilman Cino. And then Councilman Arquette.
Council President, I didn't get an answer to where the report is. I keep talking about the snow, there's snow up there, we know that. Where's the report?
All right, we have to ask the administration. Mr. Kirshenbaum is going to have to leave the press box, and what we have, he knows about where the report is.
I know nothing. Nothing.
Again, as a general disclaimer, I'm not part of the administration. I do not know where the report was, or is perhaps the snow has something to do with it. I'm not entirely sure.
It's definitely a good job.
Yeah, I don't know. Reminds us of the expression, this week is last week's next week. I think that it becomes, I ripped the bus and since the shelters, I have plowed, but they can't get the report to us, it's a bad decision. Would that be it?
Would be. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. Back to the snow, snows have improved. I went down on some blocks, I did drive around the stadium area, Lascaux Place, and Ward 2, Victory Street was very, very bad, Pershing Street, those areas off of Reservoir which are side streets. So I think the city did a great job on the main arteries, which they're responsible for. I think we need to look at the contractors, the Bush contractors who were assigned to poor areas, and those contractors, Kirsh just don't give a holler. I mean, I don't think they're putting plow to the pavement, and I don't think they're making a second and third pass, because they left a lot of ice in Wards 2 and 3 on the side streets, and it was very dangerous for members of the public. So I think the administration should address that, those vendors that are paying and not doing a sufficient job, find other vendors.
Mr. Kirshenbaum, do you want to speak to the industry?
I don't really, I was talking to the boss of Haskett, and we were talking about snow plowing, and really what the issue is, is that we need more 10-litre trucks in the city. Once the snow gets to a certain height, the private contractors plowed aren't big enough to clear the street completely, it needs to plow for years, I know that.
Just to give you an update, I've plowed for 22 meters. The problem that I have is, all secondary vendors, I have three quarters on truck with an eight-and-a-half foot fisher plow on, with a hundred of the soap eyes on the side of the road, even with the secondary vendors coming through, all it's doing is to push on, and it's rolling it back down. So unless you get up to 10 litres in there, opened it up initially, they're not going to get it clean. If you can send them through 10 times and not get clean, my streets are going to start to curl. Nobody else is.
Someone should take a trip to Buffalo, New York, after a 40-inch snowstorm, the next morning, snow levels, you're not going to understand. You can't tell the snow, you can't tell the slick.
I'll talk to the mayor about that, he's expensive. Thank you for wanting to take that. It's a door, Council, to my whole business. Is there any whole business in here? There's none. Introduce your new business.
Thank you, Madam. A motion from Colonel and the Liberty City.
So, is that good? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.